Indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Cummings here.
Austin Cool here.
Thor's Cool here.
Griffin here.
Thomas here.
Wade here.
Gage is all here today. Meeting minutes approved of November sixteenth. Any additions on collection? Cummings will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Austin Cool second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Austin Cool to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Citizen input? See none. Meeting summary since last council meeting. Wes, Fire EMS?
So we have trainings on first, second, and third Monday for MVO EMS and Fire on the third Monday for the meeting on the fourth. We have three individuals that have put in applications that we're interviewing for paid-on call.
We only have one or the other two?
These are for paid-on call, not in full-time.
Oh, volunteers?
Volunteers, paid-on calls. We have three people that have put in an application
Awesome, awesome.
for volunteering. One is from Columbus, one is from Marshall, and one from Lake Mills.
Okay.
Licensed?
Well, the one from Lake Mills is licensed. There's an A M T D one in Columbus is just finishing up basic. And one in Marshall, I believe, is, might be a basic already.
Are they already working in Marshall too?
Uh, no, he's on Marshall Fire.
Yeah.
But they don't run EMS over there. Sumpere runs their EMS, so. And to be on Sumpere, they have to be a paramedic. So they're looking at coming over here, join our staff, which would be a very welcome sight. And the one is, uh, the one they're interviewing on Monday, the eleventh, is an A M T. She was running with Lake Mills CMS. Her husband used to be on her department many years ago. And she wants to keep her license up, and so she'll be getting interviewed on Monday.
Do we have a limit of how many we can hire? We could hire all three?
We can hire all three.
Okay. But as far as the full-time one, we still only have the one applicant?
Uh, I thought there was two.
One backed out. He took another job. So I sent out an email last week saying, we've got to get this stuff scheduled. And I have heard nothing, so.
Yeah, the one is still interested. I had reached out to him, so he was interested as of last week, but the other one had gotten a job.
Is that the one from Minna Manash?
Ace, his name is Daniel Ace, right?
He's the one that?
Still interested?
He's the one I think that backed out. I thought Daniel Ace backed out.
There's someone with Riley.
It's in the email, yeah. So.
I've got to apologize, I've been dealing with my mother, so I have been
Yeah.
looking at a whole lot of emails.
The guy's got it too, so just don't check to find out, because we should really get them scheduled. Even if it is just the one, just so the guy knows yes or no, you know, if we're interested or not.
Yeah, because the one from the Minna Manash area, I've worked with him before. I know who he is.
Okay.
So I have some history with him.
And I couldn't tell you which were Daniel Ace.
There would have been Matt Riley.
Is there anyone that's still in? Who, Matt Riley?
Matt Riley.
There's a Riley person.
He's still in.
Yeah, he's the one that's in. Good.
I know him personally.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, if you guys want me to get that scheduled for you, let me know. If he's good, let's.
Not move it, yeah. Especially since we have nothing else coming in.
I said, I haven't looked at a whole lot of emails lately, because I've been dealing with issues on the personal side.
Sure. All right, anything else?
Good.
All right, uh, library, no Kelly. Water and Light, Tim?
The Water and Light dealt primarily with wastewater treatment plants. And it's progress in approving or recommending to the council approval of bills.
Yeah. Didn't you say that it looks like they're still pushing? When we were talking at Public Works, something's still going to be a little bit behind on the plan?
Yeah, they had talked about Lepre. Can't get L C Cs in there, switch gears. They pushed that back out another six months.
But is it still going to be done in twenty-five?
Done.
No. But that won't hurt the roads.
What's that?
That won't hurt the road construction. Okay. Anything else, Tim?
Nope.
All right. Parks, Mr. Gage. Where'd he go?
He left.
Oh, he doesn't want to talk?
That's no problem.
Oh, that's right, he did. That's right, he has practice. Go ahead.
Well, last night, we had a meeting. We discussed, um, the rental agreements. And we have tabled, or not really tabled, we sent it to the lawyer for some changes, and then it'll come back to a future date after it goes back through in February, I think. And also the fees, which I think is on here. No, the rental agreement's on here.
No, just the agreement was on here, no fees yet.
So we took it, but we took it off, right?
Right, while it's still on.
Well, the rental agreement's still on, because I put it on in case it was.
Correct, in case it would go through, right.
Right, and then we talked about the part fees too.
Yeah.
And also made some changes that we're going to run through too, so.
So basically.
It'll come back in February after our next meeting.
So we'll end up tabling D.
Yep.
Not a problem. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It seemed like it went a little better. At least Brian Henning was here at this meeting.
I was going to bypass it if it didn't.
Yeah.
I would have tabled it.
Yeah, so it was helpful that he was here, because he wasn't at the meeting we had before that. And it seemed like that ended up being a complete waste of time, because I mean, do it all over again. So hopefully, we're on the right track and put that mess behind us and get the contract signed, and away we go. All right, public health and safety.
Public health and safety dealt with the holiday parade, a request to hire a lieutenant, and a retirement, all of which will be coming before council later on this meeting.
Very good, thank you. Public Works?
Pretty short agenda. We talked a little bit about upcoming, um, construction projects that we should probably get started on. You know, planning and preparing for. Other than that, there was nothing additional.
Um, other than the light pole?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's going to be being installed soon.
Yeah.
Hopefully by the end of the year at the Four Corners.
Let there be light. Then we want a reed on it.
Let there be more light.
It'll only be a week.
We'll live, we'll live without one reed. I'll get over it, but just expect a phone call.
Oh, at least one.
I'll bring a reed. There you go. We'll hang something up on it. Fantastic.
That's fine, so I got you. The teacher of the mayor.
All right, new business. I still don't know why we have that. Nothing's there. Item six, recommendations of the boards, committees, and commissioners, public health, Tim.
The committee reviewed the application, a special event application for a holiday parade to take place this December ninth. They unanimously recommended to the council approval of the holiday parade for December ninth. It'll be taking place from five P M, going from the old Casey's building, West Madison Street, North Monroe Street, Dickinson Street into the park. It's the same as it has been in past years. With the police chief, he had no problems with the parade route. And he says there's been no issues.
Other than they go too slow. There's a lot of walking.
I could ask them to run. Make them run this time.
Mary, look to see if you can run it.
See how fast you can do it.
Thomas makes a motion to approve the special event parade, or special event permit for the holiday parade December ninth from five P M, going from Casey's to the park.
Motion by Thomas, second by Austin Cool to approve the event.
All right, any questions? Do we know how many they have in it this year? Don't they kind of tell us how many floats?
Well, I know they have a big plane.
They have a big what?
Plane float.
A plane?
A plane float.
It's right by my chair.
It is really cool.
It was a train.
Yeah.
Got it.
So this one's a plane, and it's really cool.
Nice. Well, that's good. Take pictures, I won't be there unfortunately.
All right.
All right, motion by Thomas, second by Austin Cool. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. All right, request to fill the lieutenant position.
Chief Sorensen is recommended to be promoted from this position as sergeant to the open position of lieutenant. Sergeant Warner has been a member of the Waterloo Police Department since August of two thousand and seventeen. And he is currently sergeant with the department, has been for a little, approximately a year, a little over a year. During that time, he has attended the three-week leadership in police organization training and has been taking on added duties, administrative duties, doing report reviews, purchasing equipment, doing background investigations. He involved in the hiring process last year of the employers that we got hired. And just that, over the time that he's been here, he's been through numerous schools. Dave's been a police officer. Oh, back, started back in the state of Colorado in nineteen ninety-three before moving to Wisconsin. He was a sergeant with, who was it, Cambridge?
Town of Oakland.
Town of Oakland. When he was working part-time. Also, so he had administrative duties there. I've worked with Dave, I spoke with Dave about his training. And I feel very confident that he is going to be able to fulfill this position.
When would it go, Gerta?
Effective December twenty-third. So it was with great pleasure that I am going to make the motion to promote Sergeant Warner to the position of lieutenant, effective December twenty-third. This is not going to be adding a new position to the police department.
It's filling the moment.
Just filling an existing position.
Motion.
It's all about a second. Cummings, second, second too.
Second by everyone, second by Charlie, to approve the promotion to Mr. Warner. Any questions? Can you ride a horse yet?
I've been able to ride a horse for a long, for a long time.
I know, but I still want you to someday ride that horse in something here. Maybe not the holiday parade, unless you're pulling me behind, but the sleigh.
And then she'll be mushy to go fast.
Congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Request to fill open position that was just apparently created.
Chief Sorensen would like to fill the position, and Nate Cullen is going to be retiring the end of this year. Thus creating an open position. The committee discussed this and is going to unanimously recommend the council approve the filling up the position. The only question we have is last year, we did a five thousand dollar signing bonus, and we also made concessions in reference to vacation. My question is, is that going to be carried over into two thousand and twenty-four? Does this need to go to finance?
Well, since we don't have any applicants at the moment, right? So we could probably have that conversation at financing?
In two weeks.
Yeah.
This would prevent him from posting the open position.
Is that something? Do we want to have this conversation? Do we want a motion and second, and then have a conversation?
That's a second piece to it, so you could do the motion for the position, and then you could always do the particulars.
Correct.
Okay.
Thomas makes a motion to authorize the chief to fill
To post it.
and post the open position.
Cummings, second. Motion by Thomas, second by Cummings to allow the posting of the open position. Any questions? So, when you post it, isn't that where you would have to say there's a signing bonus? Or laterals? Pardon me?
When you interview?
It would be nice. It would be nice to have it, when you post.
It's an incentive.
But you could add that to the posting at a later.
At a later date. Just simply put it in for now, at least, to get it going. Okay. Yeah, I think we would probably have to have that conversation, since we didn't budget for it. We didn't bring that up. We did it for that short term to fill before, so I think we should probably have that conversation. And if somebody calls and asks about it, you can simply say honestly, yes, we're looking into it. We have done this before. Just kind of give back to you. All right?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. C D A, freeze agreement for three thirty-three Portland Road. Is in your packets. Everett, would you like to chat about that?
Yeah, it's a developer that's looking to put up a spec building. So roughly, they're unsure on the exact square footage yet. They got to do some geotech review and things like that, but looking to put up a spec building on that site. So build a suit, ten percent office, ninety percent industrial warehouse space like that, so.
And it's for the whole property?
Correct.
Okay.
Outside of the stuff that is on Hendrick Street and things that we're going to have to, you know, push now.
Right, we'll have to work out what that looks like with that grant when we do that further. So this is very similar, if not almost identical, to the freeze agreement that we had before with the judgment out of Cottontown. So this is just a new company that we're giving them the time to go through it. It is, as you probably have all seen, signs are up, things are there, so just in case anybody calls, we could legally say it's just not a freeze at the moment. Anybody have any questions about that? There you go.
Austin Cool, motion to approve the freeze agreement for three thirty-three Portland Road.
Cummings, so second. Motion by Austin Cool, second by Cummings to approve the freeze agreement for three thirty-three Portland Road, recommended by the C D A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Griffin, second.
Griffin, second. Motion carried. Madison Regional Economic Partnership Presentation. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Jason Fields, president of Madison Regional Economic Partnership, otherwise known as Madden Rep. And you all are familiar with Everett Buckzine, our economic development specialist, Frederick Flores, our community development specialist, and the big man on campus, Craig Kettleson, our enterprise development director. We're here basically to just touch base with you all about, one, who we are, and then how we can help you with whatever it is your vision and strategy is, how we can be a resource and serve you all in Waterloo. And so what I would like to do is go through this presentation sort of quickly, because we want to leave time for questions. But Madison Regional Economic Partnership, Mad Reps for short. We're holistic economic development agency. We practice what we call economic development on five stools. Whether it's business attraction, new business development, now workforce development, things such as housing, transportation, childcare, foreign domestic, foreign indirect investments. Meaning how can we have our region become a place where everybody wants to look at our region and ask and answer this question? Is our region a great place to live, work, and play? So if the answer to that question is no, then how can we make it better? And part of that is why we're here today, to help great places such as your city become a recognizable place where people want to live and come and visit and stay. So Madden Reps, next. So how we do this is, we are mandated by the federal government to become an economic development district for all eight counties. That eight-county region consists of roughly a million people. And the beautiful thing about this is, once we get this economic development district, how it benefits our region, you all in particular. When you're looking for potential projects or dollars, federal funding. If you're in this economic development district, what happens is, you send, you apply for funding. We help with some of that. We have a grant writer on staff who can help do some of that. What will happen is your application information sort of gets moved to the head of the line, because we have this designation. And how we get that designation is through our process called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. That strategy takes into consideration, where are we going to go for this eight-county region in the next three to five years? Our role is not to tell anybody what to do, rather is to come through a SWOT analysis, which we've done in each county, but to localize it, to come to you all and say, hey, where do you want to be in three to five years? We do the SWOT analysis, and we try to help you figure that out. And we devote our resources, our nine-member team member, to helping you do that. Next slide. So we came through this process, and we took a bunch of individuals from academia, businesses, municipal leaders from all over the eight-county region, and we sat in a room for three days and determined, okay, what do we want to do? Where do we want to go? What should be our priorities? Next slide. And what we came up with is the strategic vision. We cover four angles. Number one, how do we grow our economy? And in order to do that, we have to ask the question, what are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? Where are the opportunities? What are the threats? So when we did this SWOT analysis, we came up with these four pillars. Making sure that we can grow our regional economy, reducing barriers to workforce. Meaning how do we attract individuals, keep them here? How can we accelerate business growth? And then how do we cultivate talent and development? Meaning, what are we doing with our young people? Are we making sure that our region is not only attracting them, but are we keeping them? And in that, you'll see that some of the top or the top issues that we had to deal with, and we still are dealing with, are transportation, housing, and childcare. Wherever we go, those are the top three issues that we hear in all the SWOT analysis that we've done. Next slide. And how we do that is through our data and our capabilities. And when we look at, what do you want to do? Where do you want to go? We make economic decisions based on up-to-speed current data. Meaning we take the emotion out of it and really look at, well, if you want to be a community that attracts young people, if you want to look at development, what land do you have? What spaces are there? And so we have a data acquisition that we've done in two thousand and twenty-three, where we use a number of data platforms that Everett has access to. And if I'm correct, we'll be using and sharing here on a daily, on a weekly basis. Correct, and every Monday? Every Monday. Thank you. Next slide, Madden Reps. And so what we've done is, this is just some of the municipalities that we've helped, that we've done some contract work with. And Craig, I'll turn it over to you to have you comment on this.
Yeah, I think in each of these communities that you see on the screen, we've done a contract for the smart one that you're considering tonight. But the one where we've done the most extensive amount of service, that maybe can start to look very much like what we've brought forward here is Mount Cora. And we did planning, we did visioning that Jason's talking about. We worked with their business park and marketing of that park. We helped them develop a fab lab in the high school. We helped them with a coworking space on the edge of downtown, and then the blue trading office building that got built there. We're involved in that process. It was a long-term commitment of time, and basically we're brought in at two points in that process. And help leverage our expertise through some of this data mechanism that Jason's talking about, and just our knowledge of the economy. And try to figure out that fit. I think that's the key, right? When you do your planning process, oftentimes the economic development portion is fairly generic. We want to come in and really drill down on that. When we go through this set process and we talk to some of these communities, you ask them, what do you want to be? What types of businesses are you trying to attract? Almost invariably, they'll sort back and say, well, what do you think we should do? And I get that. I totally understand that. If you haven't been put through that process and really been kind of doing the deep dive into what's possible, maybe you haven't thought about that. I think that's what our job would be, to walk you through that process and help really think about that. And the one we talked about on Tuesday night is Evi Discovery, right? The biotech company that you got to town. If you want to do more of that, we have relationships with the university and the research park. And can we attract some more of that type of business? But are you interested? To kind of get out of that reactive mode, to just kind of take what comes in the door and go on the front foot and proactively go out and get it, and kind of market your community to it. I think that's what we're looking to do more long-term through this process.
Do you use people's comprehensive planning documents that they've created?
Yeah, we'd like to enhance that. Certainly work with it.
Yeah.
Respect it, particularly from the land use and the zoning aspect. But work on that economic development visioning piece. And what do you really want the community to look like? I think as Jason alludes to.
Everett and I can look at that again. I know we just did a five-year update from what I'll go with a couple of years ago.
Right.
So we'll probably have to do it again, so.
Yeah, the real, the real goal is to look at what you have and just incorporate it into the region, right? It's not to replace or do away with it. It's how do we sell the region? And one of the things that I would say is, we have to get out of this sort of us versus them attitude. It's, the competition is not, you know, Waterloo versus Madison. It's us versus Boston versus North Carolina Research Triangle. It is much more global now. And when you look at all the strengths and the things that we have in our region, and I say this, and I don't blow smoke, but you guys are positioned very well. But how do we tell that story? How do we start looking at, well, Waterloo is a great place to live, work, and play? How many people know about it? One of the things Craig and I were talking about, which I thought was just brilliant, was, what did you say to me about the tax thing?
Yeah. Basically, market your community right now to Madison when they just got their tax bill. This is a conversation we had Tuesday night, right? How much cheaper it is here. It's a real estate developer trick, right? You want a property that somebody's sitting on, unfortunately, they get their tax bill and call them, hey, you're going to stop. Right now, you should have billboards on. Like, don't like your taxes? Move to Waterloo.
So he's saying that to me, I'm like, that's freaking brilliant, man. We should really do that, because again, you are positioned very well, but how do we just support that? Next slide, Madden Reps. All right, those are our ugly mugs. Me, when I had short hair, it was a little heavier at the time, but. So myself, Everett Buckzine, Frederick Flores, will be, you know, basically, you have resource and access. We will all be working, but we'll be the project leads on that. And here's the team that we have, myself and the rest of the merry crew. But the beauty of this is, you get all of us, right? This is not a, you know, one done, wham-bam, thank you, man, we're done. No, this is a long-term relationship and investment and partnership. And again, we're mandated by the federal government to do these kinds of things. One of the reasons, and if I can, Madam Mayor, just talk about, so what's in it for me, right? One of the eight-hundred-pound question of the gorilla in the room. The ability to win. You know, I, I'm from Milwaukee, nothing wrong with Madison, but when I looked at our area and our region, for me, it was very important that we start having other people at the table. It can't be about one municipality or one city. We don't win that way. And it's, quite honestly, when you start factoring in all the things, there are huge opportunities in places like Waterloo. We have to be adamant about that and tell that story. So for me, it's the ability to win and get something done. Next slide. Some of the scope of proposed services, again, we have a grant writer on staff. Her name is Everett as well. I'm partial to people named Everett for some reason. Office hours where Everett will be here, but we also, we make sure that we have an open line of access and that we're here. Business recruitment, entrepreneurship, business retention, expansion. One of the data softwares that we acquired gives us the ability, and I think I should spend a little bit of time on this, is to come and talk to your community with an arms-length approach. Meaning we can come to your businesses and sort of ask them, what's going on? What do you look at? What do you need? And compile that data and present it in a report fashion to you all. One of the beautiful things about that is, it sort of takes away the tension and gives people the ability to just say, hey, we want to be truthful, but we don't want to take the risk of ticking somebody off and having somebody start targeting us. So if you really want to start getting to the truth, you send in a party like ours and go, hey, what are you looking at? What do you need? What makes this place great? And you all have great stories about why you're here. We just need to tell those stories. Next slide. And so why you all? Because again, you're well-positioned for growth, strong manufacturing sector. You are a key place, again, when you look at geographically where you're at. You have a lot of the amenities. We need a little bit more, but more importantly than that, we just have to tell a story about you all. We really have to tell the story. And I think that's something that this relationship, we can do. I think that was quick enough, okay? Didn't go too long, no?
Well, you reversed it Tuesday, so you were just being fair.
Questions, concerns?
C D A met with them Tuesday, so a lot of these guys kind of heard this story before, so. so if anybody else has any questions? So, basically, Everett is still our guy, he's still going to be with us, he's just now under the Madrep umbrella, so we're actually getting Everett on steroids. We have a whole lot more to go with him. You go ahead, Barry. Barry, Barry's our utility manager.
Yeah.
A lot of people ask, like, when we hired Everett, like, what, what we would consider a win for him?
Yeah.
You know, as far as progress that we bring in to the community? Um, he obviously works on a lot of things that don't work out. It is part of the game, you know, he's shuffling a lot of people, whatever, but what would you consider like a win for the community? Is that something that you have to have a certain amount of growth in a certain amount of time, or just getting the name out there? Or what, what would you consider a win? Like, how would we evaluate you in the next two to three years?
I think it's, it's a couple of ways you can look at that. Now, I'll add to that in a couple of ways. For me personally, a win would be to leave here and after six months or so, you all go, hey, we brought Madrep in and we can see what they're doing. There's some kind of return on that investment. If that means our revolving loan fund, invest in a business here to help get that business growing. If that means introducing you to, uh, for example, we have, uh, we've had the Netherlands, Spain, France come. We've had a public company that's looking to expand workforce. It would be to increase those kinds of relationships to put you on a map so that when these kinds of companies come here and need housing or residential places, are they considering Waterloo as a place for them to have employees live? Employees that you want, right? And so, I think for me, the win would be, number one, not to say what the win would be, because then that would mean me defining it, but to ask you, what would you consider a win? A win for me would be to look at one of your businesses and go, hey, let's see if we can help this business grow. But ultimately, in the bigger scheme of things, I would love for you all to say, hey, we brought those guys in and based off our ITR, investment time to return, we see a positive result. Whatever, however you measure that, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's a housing project, maybe it's, uh, hey, there's a company looking to locate here, we need to meet with utilities, can they come? And can you start seeing what, what can happen here? So, I think it's a number of ways to, to measure that. Ultimately, it would be to hear, you know, we made this investment, we spent some time, and here's the measurable or solid return, whatever that may be. If that answers the question.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say it's hard because it's hard to judge when you're working on products, they don't, they don't all come in, you know, and, but yet, they're working on them, which I understand, but at some point, I mean, the city council is going to want to see progress.
Yep.
And I just, I just want to get an idea of what you consider progress.
I think it has to be, it has to help be defined by what we think we can do, what's measurable, what we can measure, and how fast we can do it, right? If we're talking about a company coming and locating here, that's, that, that's not going to be a six-month deal.
Correct, and that's what I'm getting at, but a year from now or two years from now, how do you judge if you, if you don't have anybody coming here? I mean, there's got to be something, I mean, if you can, if you can take a company that's already here and they're expanding and growing and you're helping out, obviously, that's, that's a win for Waterloo.
I think you can measure it a couple of ways. You can measure it from a marketing perspective, meaning, how many people know about Waterloo? And you can measure that via social media and marketing campaigns. If there are, for example, one of the things that we're thinking about, uh, we have a magazine that we circulate and we highlight certain places. And my thought process now is, how do we highlight you, highlight you all? Maybe it's a front cover page in 2025 because we already doing 2020, we're doing 2024, right? I think that's, it's done already. And so, are there 300-some-thousand people now looking at Waterloo from across the country? Are there now more people attracted and looking at, okay, we want to see something done? Is there a strategy where we look at the taxes and send out, I don't know, some kind of marketing piece and there's more inquiries? So, I think, to be technical about it, we'd have to define it because the last thing we want to do is shoot for the moon, um, and then fall short with some unrealistic expectation. So, that's something I think we all work on.
And knowing we had, we call also Erin, Erin 2.0, Erin Welty was somebody we had in here a while ago, you probably remember her. And it took over four years to get Perry's done and get the mineral street apartments, and things don't happen fast, and we do realize that.
Oh, it ain't gonna take me four years, man.
Well, that's good because I don't have applications for four years. So, I mean, I know some of this stuff does take some time, and that was a big deal to get rid of all that property, there was a lot of moving parts, and unfortunately, some of it's still a moving part with the Solarium now.
Measurable momentum.
Yes, and two, right.
Oh, we gonna get something done. I, I give it all that, it won't be four years. I like to win. I am very competitive, and these guys are too, uh, and I move fast, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, four years, that's, 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 a year, yeah, we, we getting something done.
Anyone else have any questions?
That's a great question, though.
Yeah, what's Everett done for the city in the last two years?
Well, it has been quite two years, but it's getting close. He's bringing more eyes to it. Look what he just did here, we have a whole new team.
I would say there's things that would not have been touched that are potentially looking to have permits and potentially factor your building through.
That takes a lot of time.
I would say a big thing that matter of his help even before entertaining this discussion of just reaching out to Jason and just getting the connections to the right people, to get those right people to table to discuss things like the DOT, you know, I was able to get 10, 15 minutes in front of the DOT secretary to discuss the Duquesne development that wouldn't have happened before, that obviously led us down a rabbit hole that we're obviously doing with now. Um, it's, it's getting that awareness and that trust from the outside to get eyes here and building the relationships up. So, the connections are deep and the expertise is also, you know, falls in line with that as well.
And also having Craig on his team, he's been a part of helping Waterloo for, for many, many years. He's also the one that helped get each, or excuse me, Nysles to Howdees now. And I think there's still more conversations going on with that, of things that he wants to do. So, this partnership here goes deeper than just Everett. You guys have had, um, eyes on Waterloo and have helped do stuff before, so this is all good there. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for that presentation. All right, item C, rescind the non-metro connections contract, which is, goes in line with the very next one of the Resolution 2023 dash 31. So, because we do have a, a contract with Everett, that is to be dissolved at the end of the year and as of January 1st, then it would, um, revert to Madrep. We don't have a rescind contract, do we? Do we just sign off on it? Is that what we were talking about in the email?
Yeah, we're just cleaning.
Yeah, so this contract, which is in there, you know, does say 45 days, but we've been having this kind of conversation now for over a month, so we're, we're well within that. So...
Charles School, wait, motion, rescind the non-metro connections contract at the end of the month.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Griffin, to rescind the non-metro connections contract. Any questions? Uh, roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles School, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried. Item D, uh, the Madison Metro Economic Partnership Contract, Resolution 2023 dash 31.
Can I just say something there? It's really a proposal because I don't have their contract yet, so I haven't sent, I haven't sent it to the attorney, so it'll have to be based on the attorney of duty.
Is it basically the scope of work, though?
Yeah, it's the scope of work with that fee associated with it, so...
But then there'll be a, a formal contract?
Yeah, so the contract will basically just, it'll outlay the description of organization as well as the scope of services plus the, the annual amount broken down monthly with the basic verbiage of payment schedules and things like that, so...
Which, going with Madrep, we're actually reducing the annual fee to 45,000 from 52, correct? So, we're actually getting a bigger bank for our...
And that'll be signed by Jason and engineer.
So, Resolution 2023 dash 31 is to enter into a contract, which will be signed after the attorney reviews it, but it's this document that's in your package.
Charles School, make this motion.
Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Austin Cool, to approve Resolution 2023 dash 31, rescinding non-metro and hiring Madrep. Any questions? Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles School, yes.
Griffin, no.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
EMS Fire Department Management Services Contract, another one in the package. It will be a touch in. Merry Christmas, vital scene of you gentlemen. Till then, thanks, thank you very much. So, yeah, there's like two of them being here.
There is, on purpose. Okay. One is the red line, and so, uh, everyone, uh, the, what, what meeting do we do this in? Do we do it in council or do we do it with the, no, it's finance? So, if we made those changes and everybody was comfortable with the changes that the attorney recommended. And so, uh, Wes and I talked, I sent the, uh, information to Christie, Chris, something like that, yeah. And so, I sent it over to her with the changes recommended by the attorney.
The billing company?
And, yes, and so, the changes that he made, uh, she agreed to right away, and she redid the contract, so that's the second one you have, where we changed the courts and changed his red line. Um, it was changed, all those things that the attorney wanted. Um, so, it was just, they, they've signed it, and I don't know, Wes, how you, if that's what you...
Yeah, as long as finance is good with it, uh, you know, it was brought up by the attorney. Uh, they're the ones that came up with the questions, uh, for the changes. I had a chance to meet with them, actually, before I met with Dean on it, and, uh, I think we're good with it. For most of you, billing company that we currently have, three of those billing, is no longer, they've been kind of taken over by this EMS MC company. Uh, we did look at some other billing companies at the time, but majority of the billing companies now are larger. All these smaller billing companies basically went to, uh, this company, they went to IMED, they all went somewhere else. So, I think we're good with what we have, uh, what we're going to be paying them is the same as what we were paying the previous billing company, a seven percent. They've made the changes without hesitation, so...
Good. All right. What's your pleasure?
Thomas made a motion to approve the building services agreement with the EMS management.
Griffin, second.
Consultants.
Motion by Thomas, second by Griffin, to approve the building services agreement, uh, service contract. Any questions? Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles School, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried. Wonderful. Um, Parks, uh, Richard, you want to table that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table. Let me get back to my agenda.
Resolution 2023.
Red Resolution 2020, 2023 dash 32 until it comes back from committee.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Wired, second by Cummings, to table, uh, 2023 dash 32 until it is ready. All in favor? I vote, motion carried. Water and Light Contractors Application. And this is our, our normal monthly payment process. And I do believe if I have the numbers correct, this one is, correct me if I'm wrong, 1,242,211 dollars and 35 cents?
Yes.
Got it.
Charles School, so motion.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Cummings, to approve the payment in said amount. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles School, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried. Um, project budget tracking and funding allocations for the wastewater treatment plant, and I do believe that next one is 1,417,602 dollars and 49 cents. Cummings will make that motion for that amount. I am not repeating that. Motion by Cummings, second by Charlie Cool, to approve, uh, the funding allocation in said amount. Roll call.
Cummings, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles School, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wired, yes.
Hasla, yes.
Motion carried. So, Down and Country Monthly Report, which is also all a part of this, we have some pictures this time. Anything new to update on that, other than what we just kind of talked about earlier, just six months kind of out on something?
And right now, they don't know, they know that that stuff is backed up, but they do have the ability to bring in more contractors or, again, to try to get caught up. So, they try to say the whole product's backed up six months really isn't correct, but they do know that it let it go back to six months.
Okay. That means nothing in terms of payments. I mean, at some point, people just will, if we don't have the work, they're just not going to be working until...
And that's what they said. They said that you're going to see long periods of nothing getting done down there.
Yeah.
And that's, that's typical of a big project, this day and age where they can't get material, they do that.
What, what percentage completion would you anticipate before it slows down, what happened?
It's going to slow down now.
It's already?
Yeah. And it's 10%? 20%? So, they said you're just going to hit one where, like, um, the truck storage shed was built.
That's what I was going to say, I'm looking at your picture.
They couldn't get to the roof for two months, so they couldn't put anything on the inside for two months. So, then you just saw nothing happen with that building, they went on to another building. They're laying lock, pouring concrete, everything else, and when the tear comes in, they move back to roofing. So, it's just going to be piecemeal like that for the next probably three years.
So, are you guys in that building then yet, or no?
We're not in anything.